Good morning, as this is a resumption of the second part of the meeting, we just have to start with the Covid talk and I'll ask Mr Calfeather to give that.
Caherlock members, the national standard operation guidance for attendance at council meetings provides at all an attendance being formed at the start of the meeting with the Covid measures in place. I would like to draw your attention to a few issues. Each person attending this meeting, a person should have completed a Covid declaration form before entering this room. These forms will also serve as a record of attendance for contact tracing purposes if required. This meeting room has been prepared in accordance with the standard operating guidance. Face coverings must be worn by all attendees when entering and leaving the room. There should be no congregating in the building before or after the meeting. A one-way system is in place for entering and exiting the room. The exit will be via the side door. In compliance with the recommendations in the standard operating guidance, the meeting time will not exceed one hour and 55 minutes. Attendees must adhere at all times to the two metre physical distancing and follow the public health advice in relation to hand hygiene and respiratory etiquette. Response plan is in place in the event that an attendee at the meeting feels unwell or is displaying possible Covid-19 symptoms. An isolation room has been provided. If anyone feels unwell during the meeting, you should alert myself or Kevin and you will be escorted to the isolation room. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr Calfeather. Now, apologies, we don't have any. We have three members coming in virtually, Consul McSharry, Consul Mulaney and Consul Catherley. Could I just ask members that when they're not speaking to mute their microphones and when they are speaking to turn their microphone on, it's just the people that are coming in virtually won't be able to hear unless your microphone is turned on. So, we have 35 items on the agenda and with your cooperation, we're going to get through it as quick as we can. The first item on the agenda is to make arrangements for the annual general meeting of the municipal districts Ballymost, Tobacurrie, the Borough District of Sligo and Sligo Drumcliff. Now, I believe these have all been agreed with the cheers. So, is that okay? Can we take that as agreed? Agreed, thank you. Item number two, to consider draft parking bylaws for Strand Hill. A report was circulated on that yesterday. Consular McGuire.
Thank you, Caherlock. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge the considerable amount of work that has been undertaken by the roads section and engineers who have consulted widely with all of the surf schools in the area. And new proposals were drafted and presented, which were circulated yesterday evening. And on foot of those concessions have been made, and considerable concessions to the surf schools. And I think it's only fair to acknowledge that, that we acknowledge that it is going to change the way they operate their businesses. And they are being asked to totally review how they work. But my understanding is that the majority of the schools are willing to do that. I would just like to put on, on the record that from the surf schools' perspective, the ideal location for them is on the seafront. And they would like to have a licensed system in operation, but directly on the promenade. Now, I'm aware, and we're all aware, given the Covid restrictions, we have limited parking on the seafront and that's not possible this year. So, what I'm suggesting is that these would be passed, however, that if required, they would be reviewed if it's not working for the surf schools who are being asked to move. And just one last point is that everyone will have been circulated with, and contacted by surf schools, and they know all of the issues which I think have been raised at the last meeting, so I won't go over those again. But this new report refers to the surf schools who are in premises as opposed to those who are in surf vans. And just, I think it would only be fair that if there is a licensed system for surf schools, that that would be applied across the board. I don't think it's fair just to apply it to the mobile surf schools as opposed to those who are in, in facilities. That's it, Caherlock. On, on the basis, and just to acknowledge the work that's been done, and I think the fact that these considerations have been made will make it hopefully possible for us to have a smoother running of surf lessons, which really is the lifeblood of Strand Hill, particularly during the summer. I think it was important that those people were contacted and acknowledged and their work acknowledged, which really drives the tourism sector in Strand Hill over the summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Consular. Has all the members agreed on that, so? Okay.
I think we're on.
Consular Boy, yeah.
It's just, like everybody else, we were contacted. Has this vote to be made today? Or is there, can it be put back another bit? It's just, we should be trying to get the agreement of all the surf schools rather than some of them. I don't know if anybody else was contacted last night, but I was sent around to emails, so.
Miss Concanon, sorry, did you hear that question from Consular Boy?
Yeah, I did. My understanding is that, that at this moment in time, five of the six surf schools in Strand Hill are happy with the proposal. There's one school that would still, it still wishes to operate from the promenade in Strand Hill. But I think we've taken all of the concerns on board and we've come up with a workable solution, which is basically having the, the premises located in the main car park in a, in a cordoned-off exclusive area, but also to have storage facilities down on the promenade for surfboards and trolleys in two locations. So, it's really, we, I think we have taken all of the considerations into account. So, I don't think there's anything more we can do. So, I, I don't think postponing anything is going to achieve a different outcome. So, I, I think that, you know, as Consular McGuire has said, you know, this is, we fully acknowledge this is the new way for the mobile surf schools to operate. And we will see how it goes this summer and hopefully it will be very successful in a very busy year for everybody. But we will certainly review it at the end of this year to make sure that it is working for everybody. So, I think that's as much as we can do. So, thank you.
Thank you, Eimer. Cheers.
Thank you, Consular Greedy.
Just very briefly, I'd like to thank Eimer and, and certainly for the work done and the collaboration. And as been previously said, the surfing is the life and soul of, of the Strand Hill area. And I want to acknowledge the very fair input that the different schools made to all of us. I think they were very reasonable, most of the stuff. And it's important that at the end of the season, that it will be reviewed and that the, the thoughts of the people involved in it will be considered again. So, I think it's a good outcome. It, it, it clearly outlines what collaboration and, and taking the views of people on the results that you get. So, I welcome it and thank all bodies for the work, including the surf schools, you and the surf schools for the, for the work involved in, in getting this solution, a workable one, we hope, and that it will be reviewed again if necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Consular Hayley.
Yeah, I just want to thank Eimer for her quick work and the response that she's given back here today. And it just goes to show with a bit of public consultation, what can be achieved and how we can work on these things. Just in relation to the, at the last meeting as well, we mentioned motorhomes and we also mentioned the airport, Sligo Airport, going to provide care parking service for, for the airport and that. I'm just wondering where we are on that, because as I says, it's a very important thing. It's something that we can't kick down the line. We have to address this at some stage. And I know that Sligo County Consular, his shareholders as well in, in the airport. It was brought up at our meeting here that was chaired by Consular Gilroy in relation to it. And there was a good discussion on that there in relation to camper vans and we came up with alternatives to it. And I'm just wondering, because the minutes of them meetings wasn't passed on yet, we haven't agreed on them. But there was vital information that, that you were at the meeting yourself. And I'm just wondering, has any of that been taken into account? Thank you.
Thank you. Consular Gibbons.
Caherlock, just in relation to what my colleague says, as far as I understood, was the last day of meeting of this council, before we deferred to this one, that we discussed this today, I didn't think that it was just the surfing schools we were going to be discussing. I thought it was about motorhomes. And the aspect to it, I feel myself that within the motorhomes, it's, we can't just brush it off and think, you know what I mean, bury our heads in the sands, just deal with one end of it and not the other end of it. We need to be dealing with the issue, the motorhomes, the motorhomes. You can't buy a motorhome in Ireland second hand or brand new at this moment. That is the reality. They've been hired out since last year. They've been reserved for people. People that use motorhomes and they normally use them abroad and things like that. It's a 52 weeks in the year. And are we going to just turn around and say, you're, you're not welcome into Strand Hill, Mullaghmore or Ross's Point, which are motorhomes? I think we need to be looking for emergency parking space for them, even if it is to come to some agreement with some of the landowners within the area and make facilities available for the likes of the motorhomes to get rid of the rubbish, to pay for it, and that they can get empty their septic tanks within the motorhomes as well. If then provisions is there, it'll do away with an awful lot of problems. I do realise it's being, all this has been landed on top of us because of the staycation, because of the pandemic. We all do understand that. But I think myself personally, we're rushing in headlong. I think this is a smokescreen with the surf schools, just dealing with one end of it. I'm not saying the surf schools aren't important. They are important. And as Consular Boy brought up about the surf school that contacted us last night, that has to be taken on board as well, because that person has raised vital points in relation to it. But I really do think we cannot just sit here this morning and come up with a great plan for the likes of the surf schools because it suits. But we're sending out the wrong message that we don't want the motorhomes. We either have place to put them or we don't. But it needs to be addressed here at this meeting. I think it's a very, very, very serious situation that is going on. If there was, if there's a major match above the Gaelic Park, we can get parking space over on Carrero. Reality, we used it for years. We've often hired a field up there or whatever else. And I think for the summer months, we should be doing similar to motorhomes. Thanks very much, Caherlock.
Thank you. So, okay, Consular Gilroy.
Yes, listen, I'm delighted that five of the six have agreed. And I, I think on that basis, we should move forward. On the basis of my own motion, which, which Consular Hayley mentioned there about the, about the camper vans, I had agreed to defer that, that we'd be ready for next year. And I even got calls from a businessman in Strand Hill on Saturday morning that had read the account of what was said and to support it. So, it's, it's right throughout the area that we need to take a look at things. And I think maybe a, a solution here would be to run for this summer and maybe do a review, report back if, if, if Eimer could agree to that, to do a report back maybe for the October meeting. And that we'd have plenty of time then if there was any hiccups that had to be taken out of it, if that would be agreeable. I think that would be a good way forward. So, I'd be supporting to let it go through.
Yeah, and I, I'll just confirm that we'll certainly, you know, review the summer and report on it at, at the end of the summer.
Okay, thanks, Eimer, for that. And thanks, members, on that.
That doesn't deal with the crisis that we're going to have this summer.
Well, can we bring a motion in maybe on that for the next meeting, for discussion on that?
We can, in relation to what I've, if, if.
Is it okay? Right. Sorry, I need a proposal and a second for this. She need, she need, Consular McGuire proposed, and Consular Greedy second. Thank you. Item number three, two parts to this, to note, part A, to note minutes of the County Sligo Place Names Committee meeting held on the 3rd of October 2018. Is that noted? Noted. Second item, to consider report of the County Sligo Place Names Committee, consideration of the place name proposals. Now, is this four different proposals on this? I'm going to take the four proposals individually.
Caherlock, point of order, point of order, point of order.
Yeah.
At our last meeting, I proposed that the council would approve the recommendations of the place names committee. That was seconded. There was a debate here.
Yeah.
For at least 40 minutes or maybe longer.
Yeah.
And it was agreed that my motion would be deferred until today.
Right.
So, my motion is on the floor.
That, so your, your motion is that, is your motion is that the four items be taken together?
My motion was that the council would approve the recommendations of the procedures committee, of the place names committee.
Right, well, is that agreed with the members? Because there's four items included in that.
Well, that was proposed, seconded, and that's what we debated. Now, in fairness, Caherlock.
Yeah, no, but I'm asking, you've asked that the four items be taken together as one. I think the four items should be taken together as separate individuals. Consular Queenan.
Caherlock, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I acknowledge the work the Place Names Committee done. And in fairness, Consular Bray, this is the place that's had all these issues, the democratic elected members. But as elected member from Innisroon, I have, I'm rejecting, I propose I will reject item four of the Place Names Committee, which is to name the bridge after Thomas, the late Thomas Howley. And I'd say that, I kept, I, there was consultation over the last couple of weeks. I kept out of the consultation from the two committees to let them have their, have their reviews. And there was no agreement. However, I have consulted widely over the last number of weeks, fightfully with the ordinary people in the town. And the effect that we leave as it is. We do, we do acknowledge the work that the Thomas Howley Committee has done. There are many ways of ironing this man. We want him, we'll, I'll let it be a plaque or a monument or whatever in the town. There is no issue with that. Everyone in town was supportive. But as of today, we have, we can call our bridges, our roads, our public buildings after anybody. And if we go down that road, there are many people we could name them. So, I'm asking for the guy from the supporter of the elected members. I would, if a similar situation happened in other villages, I would be guided by the elected member in that, in that area. So, I'm, if Consular Bray is going to force this into four different issues, we have no option but to vote all on now. But I don't think there's any need for that. I think number one, two and three, I think there's general consensus on it and the issue is passed. And we've come to number four, and I would never reject number four.
Okay, Consular Queenan, I've been asked by one of the members here to clarify items one, two, three and four. Item one, proposal submitted to name part of the L3202 as Father Conway Road in memorial of Father Austin Conway, former curate at Grange. Is that agreed? Agreed, item?
Wait, wait. Okay, wait, there's a motion that the council approve the recommendation.
Okay, I'll read out these four. So, the second act, proposal submitted regarding the naming of the Western Distributor Road. Item three is proposal submitted to name local road L73152 as Doon Wheelan Close. And the fourth item is proposal to name the bridge over the Ballywaddy River at Lower Main Street in Innisroon after volunteer Thomas Howley. Consular Bray, you don't want these items taken individually, you want to take them as one. We have someone that is, is not agreeing with that. Do we take them individually or as one?
Caherlock, there's a motion before the council.
Yeah, is that motion agreed?
And seconded.
Yeah, is that motion agreed?
Caherlock, can I speak?
Is that, no, Consular.
Chairman.
Yeah, but Consular Bray, I said, is that motion agreed?
As the proposer of the motion.
Yeah.
Can I speak on it?
You can, yeah.
Thank you.
And then we'll ask if they're agreed or not agreed.
Because I do accept that there was a discussion at the last meeting, that some of the concerns were expressed about the issue of the bridge in Innisroon. We cannot deny that. But this council's place name committee has recommended that we name the bridge over the Ballywaddy River.
Sorry, Consular Bray, you're correct on that. I chaired, I chaired the Place Names Committee. Consular Clark, Consular Mulaney, Consular Fox, yourself and other people were on that. The Place Names Committee recommended that the naming of the bridge be brought forward to the May meeting for consideration. That's different to what you were saying. So, we agreed on that.
Caherlock.
No, that's, 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 I chaired the meeting.
The minutes, the minutes of the meeting are there. We can ask.
As they're in draft form.
The minutes, yes.
Yeah.
And the recommendation was.
That it be brought to the May meeting for consideration.
All, all of them, yes?
Yeah, brought to the May meeting for consideration.
There were a recommendation, recommended.
Yes.
Recommended, all of them, recommended that we name the bridge.
No, 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 you're incorrect in that, Consular Bray. Consular Clark, you were at.
Look at the minutes, look at the minutes, Caherlock.
Yeah, but Consular Clark was at the meeting.
No, I'm not asking Consular Clark. I'm saying, look at the minutes.
I don't have the minutes, they're in draft form.
I would ask, I would ask so, to clarify it. Maybe the meetings administrator could put the minutes out there. Because the minutes record what happened at the meeting.
Yeah, Consular Mulaney.
Chairman, Consular Clark. Chairman?
Consular Clark, yes, you were at that meeting.
Yes, we have two options here. We either vote on Consular Bray's motion, or I propose an amendment to Consular Bray's motion, proposing that the first three would go through and that the fourth would be rejected as an amendment to Consular Bray's motion. Now, there's no point in having a big argument about it.
No.
And if you have their say. So, we either.
Caherlock.
Yeah, one second, let's, 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 let's break.
Caherlock, yes.
Yeah.
No, and without interruption, please, please. Now, Caherlock, the council's place names committee recommended, the record will show, recommended that we name the bridge over the Ballywaddy River in Innisroon, the Thomas Howley Bridge, to honour the memory of a young Innisroon man who gave his life in the struggle for Irish freedom 100 years ago this month in May of 1921. In 1921, the War of Independence had escalated with over 1,000 people killed in the first six months of the year. The British Army, the Black and Tans and the RIC had imposed a reign of terror throughout the length and breadth of the country. And in the six months or seven months prior to Thomas Howley's death, the British executed over 20 members of the IRA, including 18-year-old Kevin Barry. The Dáilí, the sovereign parliament elected by the Irish people, was declared illegal by the British government. And thereafter, the Dáil and its ministers, including Eamon Devilleira, Arthur Griffith, Caoilbua, Michael Collins, Constance Markwich and others, were compelled to carry out their work in secret. Sligo County Council also played its part in the campaign for independence. The republican council elected in June 1920 had no hesitation in declaring its allegiance to the republic and to the Dáil. Indeed, history tells us that Sligo County Council was obliged to hold occasional meetings on the Ox Mountains so as councillors who were IRA activists could attend the meetings. Consular Frank Carty, Consular James Hunt, Consular Franco Byrne, Consular Seamus Devins TD, Consular Michael Marlin, Consular Alec McCabe TD, were all leading members of the IRA. And in the weeks leading up to Thomas Howley's death, the IRA in Sligo had carried out successful ambushes in Ballasdeare and had killed free. Caoilbua, Michael Collins, Richard Mulcay were among those at a national level who organised and directed the IRA operations against the Crown forces. On the 25th of May, on the same day IRA volunteers, including members of Michael Collins squad, were attacking the custom house in Dublin, volunteer Thomas Howley and his comrades were involved in an ambush in Ballinagh. Thomas Howley was unfortunately shot and captured and died from his wounds three days later on the 28th of May 1921. And Thomas was just a boy of 18 years when he was killed by Crown forces. And Chair, when I was first elected to this council, one of the longest-serving members at the time was the late Consular Tommy Deidnann from Riverstown. And Tommy Deidnann was commandant of the Riverstown Battalion of the IRA during the War of Independence. And his reminiscence of the period and of the savagery of the Crown forces was certainly noteworthy. Members of his battalion of the IRA would have attended the funeral of Thomas Howley in Innisroon. And I'm not sure if Tom attended, as it took place a day or so before he was captured by the British Army. So, in essence, Caherlock, in naming the bridge after Thomas Howley, we are also remembering all his comrades in Sligo, including leading members of this county council who played their part in the War of Independence. They were brave, courageous, resolute young men who despite their shortage of weapons and resources, were prepared to take on the might of the British Empire. And I think we owe them a debt of gratitude. And as the elected representatives of the people of this county, I believe this week, on the 100th anniversary of his killing by Crown forces, we should honour the memory of Thomas Howley by naming the bridge in his native town, the Volunteer Thomas Howley Bridge. And I formally move the motion, Caherlock. And I would ask and appeal to members.
Thank you, Consular Bray. Consular Mulaney?
Can you hear me, Caherlock?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I want second Consular Clark's proposal. And we all accept the heroics of Thomas Howley. But the people of Innisroon, through their elected representatives, has spoken and they have said that they don't want this bridge named after Thomas Howley, they want it honoured in a different way. And I think we should take kindness of that fact and listen to the elected representatives from that side of the country. Thanks, Caherlock.
Thank you. One second.
Listening here with this May, that is the only way I can describe it, right? This whole thing of Thomas Howley would have never lifted off the ground, only that a, a committee got together to name the bridge after him in Innisroon. Then when it came as far as the council, right, committee within the area decided to go against it. I personally, I'm disgusted to hear the arguments that's here today. In my book, I'm an Irishman. And as an Irishman, I look on the likes of Thomas Howley. As one of our great patriots, there's no difference what Thomas Howley stood for, or Wolfton or Robert Emmett, or any of them great leaders in the past. He paid for it with his life. We are talking about the naming of a bridge within Innisroon beside where the man came from. And you know something? Do we want to have this meeting ending today? Right? The people is actually leaving this meeting and they're going to be described as quizzlings outside of this room, councillors. And I personally think myself, there shouldn't even be a debate about it. I would defend Thomas Howley, the same as I would defend Devilleira, or I would defend any of the men and women that put their lives on the, on the line during the War of Independence for this country. We shouldn't be sitting here squabbling about, oh, we're not naming it after Thomas Howley, we're not naming it after such a person, we're not. It could be a done thing. I mean, to say the truth, the Whits and Brits of this country, we have bloody worse streets called Connell Street, right? We have our streets called after Wolfton. What is the difference? We have a little area, a seaside town resort, right? As significant as anywhere, it draws tourism in, the amount of people that goes through it. And the history of Thomas Howley is known in that area. And here we are, that a committee comes along, puts a, a name together and they want to name a bridge after it. And like everything else, you have those that's totally anti. And that is the reality. Anything to do with our proud history, do you know something? Realistically, if I ask every single one of you around here, how proud you are of being Irish, you wouldn't hesitate, not one of you. And if it was a thing that your party leaders was, of the past, that fought the War of Independence, was challenged, even if 31s started to jump up and you defended, you defended to the last. And here we have an anniversary coming up of a lad of 18 years of age. But you know what? I have a daughter of 20 years of age, she's my youngest child. And she's still a child. And the reality to it. But the one aspect about the likes of Thomas Howley and those that went out and done what they had done, they had done it for a passion, a passion that burned into them, to break away from the clutches of Britain. That is the reality to it. And we're sitting around squabbling that we should sit down and take directions whether we name a bridge or we don't name a bridge. I'm sorry, to name it a bridge, if it is a thing that somebody has came up with, we shouldn't even, we shouldn't even hesitate. It should be done. But let's hold together on this and name this bridge. This bridge is the duty of this council. Not a handful of people dictating to the councillors what should be done, what shouldn't be done. The amount of phone calls that I've had in relation, I was going to stay out from this, only for the debate we had the last day in it. I couldn't believe it. Because in my book, I don't, as I says, I didn't even know who it was. Somebody fought in the War of Independence, I will defend them, I will defend them to the last. And when I heard I was not going to get involved in this debate in one aspect or the other, was the way it was dragged out the last day. Now, we either stay united here or someone's walk away as quizzlings. And I'm serious, that is not a very nice name to be called. And I wouldn't like to think of anybody wearing that badge. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Consular Baker. Consular Baker, you would indicate to speak? Is it someone in the members' room? Your hand was up.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah. No, I, I know we're getting bogged down again in it, but I have as much republican blood in me as anyone. I know we had a similar situation in our own village where we're going to do something, like can breathe, I've mentioned the man's name there. And when we had suggested and were offered, and then the man's son came to me and he said, you might be just safer stand back at the moment. Because a lot of us know our history. But there's a lot in history that happened between brothers and families, uncles, nieces. And if it was all written down, we're getting harder for history, but we're not getting the full history. I, I have no problem, Thomas Howley, real man. But whether it's going to cause divisions among community, I think we're in an island today where we're trying to move forward. And it's not backwards we're going. If the people out there in senses want it, we have two different elements against each other and that's not the way forward. And I took the advice from my local person on the ground. And we're trying to get something solved here, but making it into political football isn't the way forward. but making it into political football isn't the way forward. We're all proud to be Irish, but we all don't know our true history in the past. There's certain elements of forgetting it. But there was a lot of bad one, can't there, no one to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Thomas Healy?
First of all, I suppose, the most important thing of any conversation that you have is that there's records of everything that's happened. Now, in front of me, I have all emails that I received from the Thomas Howley Commemoration Committee. In relation to, first of all, contacting me and a letter that I've here on asking me to, would I help them in getting their bridge named after because of what happened in Merton Savage in Ballasdeare and the great occasion it was and how it brought the communities together and everything else? I wrote back to them and it says, yeah, no problem, I'd help you in any way I can. And I've also says when I wrote back to them that please find, I hope this finds you well. Thanks very much for your email, appreciate it. First of all, well done, and for your local people who are coming together. And I would be delighted to help with your committee. And I outlined a couple of questions, which mean, Heather, have you a date for the committee hoping to hold the event? Have the committee registered with the PPN, right? And the following correspondence, and which I did say the last day, the following correspondence, thanks for your quick response, we would be delighted for you to put forward a motion to Sligo County Council. There has been a conversation with Innisgron councillor Joe Queenan, who has given his word that he will back the motion. Now, I'm not here today to divide any community, and there is no divide in the community out there. I would ask the Colerick of Sligo County Council here today, last Monday, we give a commitment that we would put this off so that a meeting could take place between the Innisgron Community Council and Thomas Howley Committee. I'm asking you to please tell us what correspondence did we receive back from them? And to read out the correspondence that you received, please, before we go any further.
No problem. I had received correspondence which I replied to. And I stated at the last meeting, we allowed time and we discussed, we discussed this issue on Fair Depp at the last meeting. And I think as has been stated, there's none of us against honouring Thomas Howley. That was fully agreed by the whole council the last day. The email, Dear Councillor Mulvey, I may mail you on behalf of the Thomas Howley Committee, I'd like to state that the meeting between Innisgron Community Council and the Thomas Howley Committee went well. We discussed at the beginning of the meeting if the Thomas Howley Committee could send the minutes of the meeting to ensure that both groups agree, or whatever was said. I have not yet received these meetings. Unfortunately, our local councillor Queenan was not in attendance at said meeting. Five out of six members in the attendance asked questions, and only two of the six members appeared to oppose the naming of the bridge. Despite correspondence to the council stating it was a unanimous decision. Concern arose from two individuals about setting a precedent on the naming of roads in Innisgron after local people. The Thomas Howley Committee would be in support of the Innisgron council or any other group decided to name a road in honour of distinguished Innisgron resident, past or present. Any project that highlighted the status of Innisgron should be welcomed. I would also like to take the opportunity to mention in North West Today Show on Ocean FM, there was a statement read out by Niall Delaney that was sent in by Innisgron resident that were extremely similar to a statement made at the EDCC and the Thomas Howley meeting the previous night. At the end of the statement, my words were twisted by a particular individual regarding something that were only discussed in the ECD meeting. I would also like to have it on record that we were unaware that the issue was to come up on the radio show and that we are not affiliated with councillor Gibbons, as he was contacted by Mr. Delaney to speak on the show. Some councillors voiced a concern over the division in the town on this matter. However, after publication of articles in the Sligo Champions, Sligo Weekend and segments on Ocean FM, members of the Thomas Howley Committee have been contacted by various Innisgron residents in support of the naming of the bridge. I truly hope that all councillor members will consider the correspondence. That was sent to me by Erin Carr, honorary secretary. And I received another one yesterday from Erin. Again, I'm aware that the meeting would take place today near reference naming of the bridge. I would appreciate it if there could be time allocated to read this out, as was allowed by the Innisgron Community Council previously. Regarding the meeting of the Innisgron District Community Council and the Thomas Howley Committee, I would like it known that I still have not received the minutes of the meeting that were to be sent to me. The meeting took place on the 13th, and today is the 23rd. In addition, there were 30 minutes awarded, minutes to speak and answer questions. Yet we were not made aware of this and did not realise there were five minutes left until a box appeared on the screen, making us aware of this. There were no other proposals, which I believe was pointed to the council asking both groups to meet after the Thomas Howley Commemoration Committee initially contacted the Innisgron District Community Council formally. I stated in my previous email, councillor Joe Queenan was not in attendance, despite being a member of the EDCC. So I question if he was aware of the meeting as no apologies were made. I stated in my previous email, there only appeared to be two people opposed to the naming of the bridge. I do not believe it is fair that two or three people on a committee can dictate to the council or its members. As was raised at the meeting of the Thomas Howley Committee and the Innisgron Committee, we are hoping to invite President Michael de Higgins to the event when Covid restrictions allow. Michael de Higgins, being in Innisgron, would be a first for the town and would bring great attention to the town, which I'm sure would be greatly appreciated post-Covid. And I responded to that email, and my response was simply to Donary Secretary that the reason I hadn't got back in touch with them was that I was allowing full time between the two meetings to allow for both groups to meet. Now, I have an amendment here, we've discussed this at length. You have one second, we've discussed this at length. Everyone has talked about it. Councillor Walsh had indicated to speak. No, councillor Walsh had indicated to speak.
Kairiluk, there's a motion before the floor, and there's a, sorry. Sorry, Kairiluk.
Yeah, one second, you didn't care to speak.
There's a motion before the floor and there's an amendment to the motion. I don't think we're getting any further, so there can be a roll call.
Yeah, answer really. I've read out, as you requested, I've read out both emails that came from Donary Secretary. The reason I didn't read out anything previous at last meeting to the committee, I don't think anything had come from them, I'd only had correspondence from the Innisgron Committee.
Yes, and I appreciate that.
And I did reply to.
And that is appreciated too. But as you did say, you've only received correspondence from Thomas Howley. Now, as I recall, last Monday, yourself asked, the Innisgron group says that they had formally asked the Thomas Howley Committee to meet on today, the 24th. Yes, that was told here by us. After the meeting, I contacted Thomas Howley Committee to tell them, listen, that this has been put on hold because you have a meeting coming up with the Innisgron Community Council. And I see yourself in it, and I see councillor Bree in it. There was no correspondence sent to the Thomas Howley Committee. There was no email sent to them regarding any meeting. So I'm asking here today, at the last meeting of this council, the councillors here left it that the Innisgron Community Council would meet with the Thomas Howley Committee and they would discuss it, and that they would report back to us. We have received no report, no minutes from the Innisgron Committee. We have received no proposal or nothing else from the Innisgron Committee. There is no divide in that community. And as you said yourself, even that councillor Queenan was a member of that committee, was councillor Queenan aware that that meeting took place? And why didn't councillor Queenan go to it?
Okay, thank you, councillor Queenan.
Now, this is typical councillor Healy, go for the man, round and about. But I can tell you, I'm elected in Innisgron for 23 years, so I should have a knowledge of what exactly has happened in the town. Now, we don't want to slip into political football. First of all, the reason I didn't go at the Community Council meeting was I left it to themselves. But I can tell you quite clearly, that the Innisgron Community Council view, which was held last November, hasn't changed. Hasn't changed. Oh, if they didn't put in the correspondence, that's all fine. But I can tell you that their views didn't change after the half an hour presentation that was made by the Thomas Howley Committee last week. I set out that meeting purposely, but I can tell you, I think I've come today, the decision of the meeting at the time, and later that night, what exactly happened. So we can go round in circles here. We want to, Innisgron wants to honour the name of Thomas Howley, either by a plaque or by a monument. But the feeling in the town, by the silent majority, by a long shot, is not to go down the political route and leave the public buildings, roads, bridges, and public buildings without any names, as we have up to now. We're a tourism town, we want to stay non-political, we want to be a welcoming town, welcome everybody. And that's the view of the majority of people in the town. It's not easy for me to come in here and do that, because there is a divide in the town, I acknowledge that. And it's unfortunate that it's happened, but it's happened. And I don't want that to happen in any other village, in any other council we're caught, we're even caught. I'm caught in this here. But I have to be strong, and I have to be honest, with elected members, I believe that what I'm saying today is I have the majority of people behind me. So we can talk on this day, we can nitpick on this day. It's a minimum function, I think we'll take it.
Thank you. Councillor Tom McSharry has indicated to speak.
And thank you, Kairiluk, can I be very brief? I think, you know, there's a reason why we have municipal district councils for certain electoral areas. And Innisgron falls in the electoral area of Ballymose, Tobacurrie. And it would seem to me that the seven councillors in that area have an issue with this. And they are the elected, democratically elected people for that area. And we have to listen to what they're saying here. If we flipped it around and it was an issue in Sligo Strand Hill, the Sligo Strand Hill councillors felt a certain, well, that would have to be given precedence and usurp the council feeling on this issue. So I think that either it was back to the municipal district of Ballymose, Tobacurrie, and allowed the councillors in that area to deal with this, they're elected for that area. And I think that would be true democracy and fair and equitable in relation to this matter.
Kairiluk, I listened to Walsh had indicated to speak.
Yeah, thanks, Kairiluk.
And I'm wrapping up after this, because we've had an hour spent on this now.
I'd be brief also. Councillor Queenan is the elected councillor in Innisgron. He should have a good feeling of having on the ground. It's not up to any other, he's mandated by the people of Innisgron. He stated very clearly the position of the community. And we have a motion before the floor, amendment to the motion. Is there a second or off the motion? Because we're not clear if there is, there is a proposal or a second, I understand, of the amendment. So can we have a roll call, Kairiluk?
Can I just, before you go any further, sorry, just hear me out, hear me out, Kairiluk. There is that, there's that document on the wall, the proclamation of this country, right? And Thomas Howley stands.
There's no one disagreeing with that, councillor Gibbons. There's no one disagreeing with that.
Now, I'm serious.
We had a debate last week for the bulk of the meeting on this. We have a debate today on it. I tried to let everyone in as fair as we can. We have 35 items to get through on the agenda.
But you know what, yeah, but do you know something? The memory and the ways it kicked around here like a football in relation to one of our patriots.
Yeah, and it appears, it appears councillor Gibbons, that there's division. So respect the chair and the amended motion.
You shouldn't be divisioned.
There has been division this year. If it is a thing that.
It's clear that the amended motion, that the amended.
Where's the email?
Where is it?
Where's the email? Where's the, where's the?
The amended motion.
Where's the response back? Hold on, where's the response back from the meeting that took place? What was the outcome of that meeting? Because we haven't heard it.
Well, I didn't.
So we're going voting on side.
No, I don't have minutes, I wasn't furnished with minutes, I didn't request minutes, I don't think the council requested. We left it that both groups would meet and talk. And it appears, am I correct in this, that after a week, there's still division?
Kairiluk.
To the chair, it was raised here at this meeting, at the last meeting, the meeting that we had on the Monday, was raised here by myself and councillor Bree, that what would the council do when it went out there and we knew what the response was going to be, and it came back the exact same.
So you knew the response?
Well, we left it with you, and you told us that, oh, look, leave with the community.
Yeah, let them do it and talk.
What proposal did they come up with?
But a week later, we don't seem to be anything so.
They've come up with a proposal.
I haven't had no proposal. Councillor Queenan is on the committee.
A monument, no, right, you're right.
Councillor Taylor.
Kairiluk, Kairiluk, look, there's nobody here saying that they don't want to honour Thomas Howley, but out of respect, to volunteer Thomas Howley and to the people of Innisgron, call the road. Because you've emotional front of your hand and you have an amendment, and this has been kicked around long enough. You have the local representative of the people of Innisgron, I would respect for him as well, which is difficult for him, and it's difficult for all councillors this. Call the road, I would respect to that volunteer for what he has done. And it has been said that we owe these people a debt of gratitude. They were volunteers who fought for our freedom, and we do. And we wish to have them honoured in every way, but I would respect, call the road.
Sorry, councillor Boy.
Thank you, Chair. I wasn't wrong last week. And one or two things there just to pick up on. Councillor Queenan, we're in politics. There's no point in saying this is political football. It's our job to make these decisions. If there is no order come back from the community councils, we should be going with the motion that was put in front of us. I would be supporting councillor Bree and councillor Healy. And just the idea that people are still loyal to the Crown after 100 years is disgraceful. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gilroy.
Just one thing, while we're talking there, I searched up the two organisations that have been mentioned. The Community Council doesn't seem to be a registered PPN organisation. They're not registered on the PPN list on the website of the PPN. So it's an unregistered organisation, I don't know what standing it has. It's not registered on the PPN according to our website.
It is not listed on the PPN website, limited. Innisgron Community Council and the history.
It is not listed on the PPN website, so that's just a thing. And the second thing is, the other three places, if somebody votes to, that they want the four to be held together, in other words, against the motion to have the first, whatever way he has worded, it could be divided that somebody is against the others. So you could have somebody that's in favour of the other three, but is voting against splitting it. So I think if you split it, you have to take them one by one.
Yes.
Let's do that again.
Okay, thank you.
The amendment I have here is, we proposed to main councillor Bree's motion to approve motions one, two, three and block and rejecting the item number four. Is that agreed?
Kairiluk, as the proposer of the motion, I just want to make one, I suppose, one point.
Thank you.
Because I know the meeting's gone on sometimes. And I listened intently to councillor Queenan. And I heard him say that if we were to name the bridge after volunteer Thomas Howley, that it would upset tourism in Innisgron. If ever the slave mentality was alive, it's certainly alive and well in Innisgron today. I think it's a very sad occasion that elected representatives, the people of Sligo, are prepared to vote down a proposal to call a bridge after a patriot. It's sad, and it clearly confirms why the government in the past were anxious to commemorate the RIC and the Black and Tans, because that element is alive and well, and it's certainly alive and well in councillor Queenan's area.
Okay, members, I have an amendment here by councillor Clark and councillor Maloney. Is there agreement on that? Okay.
Councillor Baker? Councillor Bree?
No, we're on this amendment, proposed amendment, one, two, three and block. And the fourth.
Councillor Cassidy?
Four.
Councillor Clark?
Four.
Councillor Connolly? Councillor Fox?
Four.
Councillor Gibbons?
Against.
Councillor Gilroy?
Abstaining.
Councillor Healy? Councillor McSherry? I didn't catch this, excuse me.
We repeat that, councillor McSherry?
Four.
Councillor Maguire? Councillor Maloney?
Four.
Councillor Mulvey? Councillor O'Boyle? Councillor O'Grady?
I'm abstaining because I am not clear without minutes of the meeting. And I think, I think it would be very important that all of us would have clarity on what happened at the meeting, what the people's reasons were on both sides. And we have to very much in mind, keep in mind, the local representatives of that area and all. And we have to very much keep in mind the local representatives of that area on all sides. So I don't think I've ever abstained in the chamber before. But I feel I'm not informed enough. And that's no reflection on any of our councillors, it is no reflection on the motion. But I'm not in a position to make, after listening to all that has gone on, I think it would be, and I'm very conscious of the people whose councillors in that area. I think councillor McSharry made a very good point where he said that really it should be brought back to the area where it, where the area is involved. So on that point, very reluctantly, because I feel I'm not fully informed, I'm going to abstain.
Councillor Queenan. Councillor Queenan, please.
Members' room. You're on mute.
Four, seven, eight, nine, ten. Four, Joe Bean, four.
Councillor Taylor.
Four.
Councillor Walsh.
Four.
Thank you. Members, Kehirlik, members, 12 voted for the motion, four against, and there are two abstentions.
Are you trying to get in, councillor Queenan?
Yeah. The councillors are all in Innes-Srone, we're not, members of PP, we've been. Councillor Taylor has here, I'm telling Taylor, you might...
It's Innes-Srone and District Community Development, CLG. It's on the PPN.
That's all right. That's all right. I didn't know where the separate organisations were just... It was mentioned in the minutes and I didn't want it reflected wrong and recorded wrong. So it's not anywhere that an Innes-Srone Community Council was mentioned. It should be changed to an Innes-Srone Community Development.
Yeah, I got you.
Okay, members.
Four, one.
Can we go ahead, so we move on? Okay, 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 councillor Gibbons. It's, yeah.
We can't hear councillor Gibbons, Kehirlik. We can't hear him. Can't hear him.
I don't believe, I don't believe for one minute, sorry, 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 Kehirlik. Kehirlik, Kehirlik, until I, excuse me, excuse me. How could you respect people that did not respect Ireland's patriot died? That lad deserved the same respect. Do you know what?
This chamber has been standing before them.
I am, I am ashamed. I am ashamed. I was on record, I am ashamed of the decision of this council in relation to Ireland's patriot died. You should be ashamed of your lives. I tell you this much, ashamed of your lives, each and every one of ye.
Chairman, can I just say in terms of the Western distributor route, just, I think it's important. I think that we should take the opportunity to propose a lot of thanks to local historian Dr Fiona Gallagher for her exceptional submission, providing us with a wealth of historical information in respect of the naming of the new Western distribution road. The time, the energy and the research invested in terms of her submission, I think is worthy of acknowledgement. And needless to say, the committee, as you will be aware, had no hesitation in recommending what she proposed with the first section of the road from Ballydú into the new roundabout recommended as the reder line retaining the original place name. And the second section of the road from the roundabout to the Caltra interchange recommended as not the Knockatufel Lane, reflecting the visually and historically important Knockatufel Hill, the highest point between Knocknuray to the west and Cairns Hill to the east. I think that should be recorded. And for those of the members who aren't on the place names committee, they may not have received Dr Gallagher's submission, but I would recommend it makes for wonderful reading. Thanks, Kehirlik.
Thank you, councillor Bree. Councillor O'Grady.
I would like to support what councillor Bree has said and what the borough council in its time and this county council have benefited from Dr Fiona Gallagher's, from her expertise and her love and knowledge of the area. So I want to, again, with my colleague councillor Bree to thank her for that. And we can always rely on her to give a very valued, and above all, she's such a love for Sligo. And she never fails to come up with something that's most acceptable and fair. Thank you, Kehirlik.
Okay, councillor O'Grady, thank you, and that's agreed. Moving on to motion number four, councillor Gibbons, have you a second or?
I second that.
Councillor McSharry, thank you.
Could we have a report?
Yeah, the report was circulated, but I will just read it. It's worth the roads department will carry out a traffic survey of the roadway leading to St Brendan's National School in Cartran. Due to current commitments and work priorities, however, it is likely to be quarter three of this year before the work can be undertaken.
Kehirlik, this isn't a problem that's actually happened to the area yesterday. It's where the school, it's the only school, I suppose, in County Sligo, that the school itself is situated within the estate. It's situated along, up into a cul-de-sac. And the problem that the school has, it's a very popular school and it deals with the whole northward area of Sligo and Ross's Point and that whole direction. And because of the volume of traffic that's going there, especially between nine o'clock and 20 past nine in the morning, the problems that's created, it's a nightmare at times. And I have to give, I have to compliment the teachers, Marie Hurley, the head and her teachers within the school. Because over the last number of years, they've tried a number of things themselves. They actually put school wardens, I had the children doing school wardens outside of the school for a number of years, which was a success at one stage. And the patrons who was, whose kids was attending the school, they respected that at the time. But under insurance and things like that, it was found out that they couldn't use the kids anymore as school wardens. So the teachers themselves actually carry out a lot of the directing of the traffic and whatever else. Now, as anybody knows, during climate weather, the minute there's any sign of rain at all, it means that 99% of the patrons who are the children that attend the school, their parents will bring cars with them. And it's, everything is crammed into a small little cul-de-sac at the top of the estate. And because of parking and double parking and buses, the bus run coming to the school and things like that, it's absolutely a nightmare. And I was talking to the school in relation to this and I told them that I'd talked to the roads department, I get brought up with the council to see was the renting that can be done. And I'm glad to see that we're looking at maybe the third quarter of this year of a survey being carried out. And maybe the possibility that we could look at maybe if funding was needed, that we could look at further down the road and maybe getting something done within the area. As I says, it's not today or yesterday, it's a ongoing issue, but the sooner we resolve it, the better. And I'd like to, thanks, Mr Gunncan, for the report. It's very welcome. I've given a copy of this report as well to the school so that they can have it there for the records. Thanks very much, Kehirlik.
Yeah, thanks councillor Gibbons. And just in, I was in help to you there on that, we're working off the new agenda today, it's item four. But the reports came out, I think, on the original agenda, so it would be item 27. So just if people are saying that, you know, when they're getting the replies, they would have been sent out on the first agenda, it was item 27. Whereas today we're starting at number one, where we adjourned. That's all right, yeah, yeah. No, that's grand, most of the members, just to inform you of that. Councillor McSharry, you seconded that?
Thank you, Kehirlik, and I'll be very brief here. And again, I'd like to welcome the report. And I would ask that maybe when they are considering the traffic survey, that there was a couple of issues I had, I didn't get to at the last municipal, that the road markings in the area, especially at the crossing to Classybone Drive, which is used by a lot of parents with young children, that those issues and any safety concern, the Eames signs, et cetera, would be looked at as well. So I support the motion. Thanks, Kehirlik.
Thank you, that's agreed. Motion number five, councillor Cassidy, have a second or? Councillor O'Grady, thank you.
Thank you. I am asking for the member's support for a cyber county council to write to Minister Heather Humphries and ask that all working mothers and their partners be allowed to take paid leave after suffering a miscarriage or stillbirth. This bereavement allowance would give employees three days' leave when a pregnancy ends in miscarriage or stillbirth, rather than forcing them to use their sick leave. It should be noted that the grief that comes with miscarriage or stillbirth, it's not a sickness, it's a loss. And that loss takes time, time to recover physically and time to recover mentally. Having this law in place would give people the confidence to be able to request a leave if it was required as opposed to just being stoic and getting on with life. Loss of a pregnancy needs time for both partners to adapt both physically or psychologically to the changing circumstances and cope with the grief. The law will enhance the position of women at work. Women have long struggled to balance the requirements of their employers with issues like pregnancy, sometimes leading them to misadvancement and other opportunities. While we have full maternity leave in Ireland for pregnancies lost past 24 weeks, 95% of miscarriages occur in the first 12 to 14 weeks. This law will hopefully help remove some of the stigma that surrounds miscarriage and allow women to feel more comfortable talking about miscarriage and that they feel comfortable reaching out for support and for help in what is a huge physical and emotional loss. So I ask for your support on this and for it also to be shared with other local authorities around the country. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor O'Grady.
I think this is an excellent motion and I think it's very well put. And I wholeheartedly support the sentiments expressed in the motion for the difficulties that people can have in coping with their grief. I think the emotion totally explains what's needed. And at this point, I'd like to compliment the maternity units, how they have advanced in their care of people who have lost, let her be in early or latest pregnancy. Now people get time with their baby, they get time, they get a box with little mementos and they get photographs. And I think that's very welcome and very healing for people who have suffered the loss. And it's great to see that in every maternity unit now, there's somebody trained to deal with bereavement. And that's a huge advancement from days gone by when people had stillbirth or miscarriage and they were just expected to go on as if really nothing ever happened. So I think it's an excellent, and I compliment you councillor Cassidy for bringing in that motion, proposing that motion, and I wholeheartedly second it.
Thank you, councillor Connolly.
I would also like to support the motion and congratulate councillor Cassidy for bringing this motion forward. It's a terrible event to happen to any woman and I think three days is not beyond employers supporting a family in this event. I'd support the motion wholeheartedly. Thanks, Kehirlik.
Thank you, councillor Maguire.
Thank you, Kehirlik. I too want to support the motion wholeheartedly. I think it's an excellent motion councillor Cassidy and well done on bringing it. I think you've put it really well, outlining the difficulties that it creates, not only for obviously the woman who's lost, but for the couple who have lost a possible child in their lives. I would also agree with councillor O'Grady in relation to her comments on the early pregnancy unit. I unfortunately have had to use that unit twice and know at first hand exactly how this feels. And they were fantastic. And I do, I've actually had two very different experiences. The first, the reaction was, not from the early pregnancy unit, was it's very common. And I think that was the attitude in the past when women were just expected to move on and get on with it. And that was a very heartless attitude, really. And then the second was very different and that was led by the early pregnancy unit. So I completely agree with the comments made in relation to them. They were very tender in relation to it, incredibly considerate. And for women who often have to go on after this, you'd be familiar with this councillor Cassidy, just when you lose, it doesn't end there and you may ultimately have to have a medical procedure. And that is also very difficult and, as you said, it's into your sick leave if you're fortunate enough to be employed. And obviously those of us who are self-employed or unemployed don't have the benefit of either of that. But I would wholeheartedly agree with the submissions you made and congratulate you on making that motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Maguire. And with all, I'd like to be associated with the sentiments as well and full support of that motion. Motion number six is my own motion, second or? Councillor Fox, thank you. Just, and I won't go through the motion, but it outlines concerns that a lot of farmers have contacted me on the ever increasing price of, concrete has gone up, all the building costs have gone up. And unfortunately, while we welcome grants that the farmers are getting, when you have steel alone jumping as high as 30% and even more, because it seems to be literally weekly now that a lot of materials are going up, that the grants are not. So councillor Fox, you second it?
Yeah, I just, I'd agree with the, support the motion. There's a lot of farm buildings being held up due to COVID-19 and I support the motion.
Thank you. Councillor Milani.
Yeah, I think it's a very good motion and very timely motion. There's a lot of farmers has been delayed because of, as councillor Fox said, COVID and also because of the difficulty of getting supplies due to Brexit. I think while product prices is good in agriculture now, there is pressure on the cap. So it's important that farmers don't end up in financial difficulty as a result of doing building work. So I think it's very important that the grants are increased.
Thank you. Councillor Connolly.
I would like to also support the motion and I think this is going to affect all contractors, all building in the future. And I think you're being very conservative, which are 10%, that's...
Thank you, councillor Gilroy.
Again, I'd like to support the motion in full, but councillor Connolly got in ahead of me there. The costs for all building work, house building has gone up substantially as well. There's a shortage. Not only, not only is that the increase in the costs of raw materials, labour costs have gone through the roof. Contractors that priced houses, I was talking to a family yesterday where a contractor had priced a house at the end of 2020. The lockdown came, they've come back now and they've asked them, can they start? And they said, not at that price. Their mortgage was approved at that price. So now they need to find about 25 to 30% extra on top and the banks won't give it. And people are in an awful quandary in this country. And I think something seriously has to be done about it. So I think we have to maybe have a wider debate on how that can be helped because it's going to just add to the housing crisis. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Healy.
Yeah, I just want to support the motion and it's important, which mean we know the great worker farmers do and trying to encourage younger farmers into this area as well. And so it's important, which mean that we, the minister reviews this. Prices have gone through the roof at the moment on any material. Thank you.
Thank you. The members' room.
Yes, thanks, Kehirlik, just, you know, just to support your motion. And I think very, very relevant right now. And I mean, I'm not going to try not to go over what everybody else has said, but everybody has, I suppose, hit the nail on the head. Prices are increasing at all times. And labour materials, property prices aren't even rising to the level that the labour and material is. And there's a huge demand there at present and we need a level in off period. And we certainly can't keep going on like this. And I think it's good motion, it's very, very timely. And I look forward and with the minister's response to it.
Thank you.
Sir Clark.
Councillor Clark. Yeah, Kehirlik, I'd like to commend you for bringing forward this motion, a very important motion at a very important time. And I'm not going to repeat all the valid comments that was made already in relation to the price of product. But this is a very worrying situation, not only for farmers, but people on social welfare and our wider community, because the price of food is going to rocket in the next couple of months. And it's going to be very hard for families depending on social welfare to live. Because as the cap is being reduced, the support to farmers will be reduced and the price of the common spud will go through the roof. And this is going to be a very expensive situation for the state. And, and this is going to be a very expensive situation for the stays when families that need support will have to get it. And you'll see that in the next few months. Thanks, Kehirlock.
Thank you, Councillor Queen.
Yeah, just, I want to repeat, I want to support the motion. Well done, Kehirlock.
Thank you. Okay, members, and look, I emphasise on that also that, you know, we're recalling the Department of Agriculture to publish revised costs because, you know, it's been stated here, I said it, I know Councillor Connolly said it, it seems to be literally weekly that product has gone up and, you know, people can't keep bearing the brunt of percentage increases. Okay, motion number seven, I'll second that. Councillor Castley.
Thank you and thank you, Miss Concanon, for the report. And I'd just like to compliment, first of all, the design team and the consultation process and I actually attended one of those evenings. And I say it's probably eighteen months ago now, maybe, maybe longer, two years ago. And the communication is so important and just to ask on that, are we still on schedule for the next non-statutory public consultation that is to take place this summer? Because I've just received a few queries on it and in fairness to the engineers, and those people who have had queries have gotten contact with the engineers and engineers have gotten contact with, with those people who may be affected and they are happy with that. But I suppose it's just to find out, are we still on, on schedule for the next consultation? So that if people have any further concerns, and there are still some concerns out there, that, that they will allow, that there is a process there to, to talk more about this and to discuss the options. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Concanon.
Yes, I, I would like to confirm that there will be a non-statutory public consultation, which regarding the refined routes, which is the shortlist of options during, during this summer. We don't have specific dates or details yet, but, but once they are organised, they will be communicated widely. So yes, that consultation will take place this summer.
Well, thanks. And just a second in the motion, yeah, I want to just concur with what Councillor Castley has said and, you know, there were people, unfortunately, due to COVID, maybe heard about the planned routes after, you know, the first consultation. But in fairness, anyone that has contacted the Road Design Office there, and I know Fergus Mead has been, Fergus Mead has been certainly very, very approachable and there's, there's full consultation and I welcome that and thank them for that. Councillor Maguire indicate, I let you in then as the proposer to finish, Councillor Castley. Once, yeah, one sec, I have to, Councillor Maguire first.
Thank you, Kehirlock. The report is very welcome and when this, when we were initially briefed on this matter, I think it's an excessive two years ago now, I had raised the matter that my uncle actually was killed on this section of the road. So it's, it's very welcome, it's very badly needed. Everyone is aware of how dangerous it is and I think regardless of which route is chosen, as long as there's extensive public consultation, it will be an improvement. Could I just ask for one other matter, which I'm, I'm sure has been considered already, but it came up at another meeting I was at during the week, whether consideration would be given for provision of a cycle lane anywhere on that route? It would lead obviously from town out to Glenkar, which is a major tourist attraction. And just ask to put that on the record, that that might be taken into consideration if possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Taylor.
Thanks, Kehirlock. Just, it's, it's my belief that by July, we should be done to, 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 or to three to four routes. And by December, we're supposed to know the final route. And I think, I'd like to commend the roads, the road staff and the roads team and Fergus Mead for the work that they're doing. They're getting numerous calls weekly and they're dealing with, with every call individually and dealing with people individually and I'd like to commend them for that. But I'd also like to commend the people of South Sligo and for actually having the patience with this. This is something that's very, very important to the people of South Sligo and it's very important to that area. But you, your motion, your last motion leads into this too. There has been a lot of, of, of building work, farm work, private houses held up during this process and still held up at the moment, at a time now where we see increases in all material costs. So I'd like to, I'd like to commend the people of that area for having the patience to deal with this. But, and, and also to the council for the work that they have done. And hopefully by the end of this year, we will know the route and the easing of the frozen, we will see the easing of the frozen zone so people can get on with their, with, with, with their, their daily lives and with what, what they need to do from, I suppose, the point of view of moving on in, in, in their building, in the building sector and on their farms.
Thank you. Councillor Healy.
Yeah, I'd just like to welcome where we are at this stage and I suppose it would be only right of us to remember poor Mary Gormley, Lord of Mercianor, only for, which mean if she was here in this room today, she'd be standing and she'd be saying what the work that she has done for the people of South Sligo. In fairness to her, she was the main driving force behind this and I think it's important that we make sure that we remember Mary Gormley on a day like this as well. A lot of time effort has gone into this over the last thirty years. And as Councillor Taylor says, there is a lot of people held up at the moment. Can't get planning because of the roots and that. So I'm hoping, which mean at the end, that sooner rather than later, that we will find out exactly what's happened. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Castley, I'll let you with the last word on this.
And thank you, I'll be very brief and thanks to the members. Yeah, again, yeah, I was going to also acknowledge councillor Gormley and Margaret today as well and I think of her and I know that others think of her often and smile and the photos pop up on, on, on Facebook of the different events that, that we were all at with her. So it's, it's lovely, I suppose, to have, to be able to remember her as well and to also to acknowledge all the residents and as councillor Taylor said, for their, their patience. But I think it's very important and I have seen it over the few months, that when somebody sees a route that might possibly be going through your land or possibly your, 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 the house that you had maybe thought of, land that you had thought of building a house, that people get, get upset naturally. And there can be a lot of, I suppose, scaremongering as well. But I think that the fears have been allayed by the engineers and that they've been listened to as well because, you know, it's obviously important if somebody has plans for, to, to build a house on a site and suddenly there's a road going through it or there's plans for a road going through it, that I think that that has to be taken into account. And it is, you know, more than, than not, more often than not, taken into account. But just to compliment again that the, just the consultation, the importance and it is a long and slow process. But I, I think it, it'll be worth it in the end because, you know, apart from the most important thing of keeping the road safe, but that residents are happy as well and that they don't feel, you know, that, that they weren't listened to or, you know, that, that they were forced to build somewhere where they didn't want to build or. So I think the most important thing is to not let people get worried or that scaremongering take over, that there's going to be a road through your house. So that's just to, just to acknowledge that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Castley. Now, just time check, it's eleven twenty, we're on motion number eight. So I can ask all the members, we can keep the brief and we'll try and get through them all. Second by Councillor Walsh. There's no report on this, Councillor Castley, it's just a letter to issue. Are you happy enough with that?
Yeah, that's fine and I'm, I'll be, again, I'll be very brief. But I think it's important that we keep this on the agenda. I know that TD Marion-Harcan has also raised this again. But I, I think it's important for the members to realise as well that Sligo Airport has managed to bring back the total cost of the capital works that were carried out from three hundred and seventy-one thousand euro to two hundred and eighty thousand euro, which is a huge cost saving for everybody and to acknowledge the massive work that they have done. So all the works have been completed by Sligo Airport, but they still await confirmation of funding for the committed works, which were necessary and vital for the protection of the licence. So again, I suppose nobody needs to be reminded here of the importance of the, the airport as the base for the Irish Coast Guard search and rescue helicopter. So the focus is on the search and rescue, the med vac, which is medical evacuation for particularly a patient to centres of medical excellence, out of hours, urgent operations and a facility for refuelling. So it also maintains a twenty-four hour air traffic control service to facilitate all of those. And I think two hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred thousand a year, the overall scheme of things is, it's, it's pittance for, for, for all the work that has been done, for the vital life-saving work that has been done. It is the only search and rescue base in the North West and it caters for, it's, it's catered for the whole entire region between Clifton and Belfast. So it's very important that we, that we get this money for Sligo Airport and we keep representing Sligo Airport until the funding is found, not only now, but annually, so that this important piece of infrastructure is maintained in Sligo and in the North West and it will continue to save lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Walsh, you happy? Just second that.
Yeah, just support the motion. I know myself and my fellow directors at Sligo Airport, we've spent a lot of time on this over the last number of months and we look forward to a positive reply from the Coast Guard. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Maguire.
Yes, as, as one of the other directors, as councillor Walsh has indicated, we've spent a lot of time, both meetings and lobbying in relation to this matter and wholeheartedly agree with the motion. Thank you.
Thank you.
As the other member of the board, I would also like to just support it. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we're all in, okay. Motion number nine, Councillor Gilroy, seconded by Councillor Gino Boyle.
And again, look, it's the, I don't know if any of you or most of you might have seen the late, late show, there was two very brave women on it, Eve McDowell from Grange and Una Ring from Cork, who had both been subjected to very, very serious stalking incidents. Unfortunately, the legal system in this country kind of makes stalking and harassment interchangeable. Firstly, I'd appeal to you all to go on to stalking.ie and sign their petition. And secondly, that we'd put this motion forward, I've sent it to other councillors around the country and it's already been passed in Cork, in Galway City and County, in Tipperary and Roscommon and different places. The term stalking and harassment are very, very different. Harassment is unwanted behaviour from someone that makes you feel distressed, humiliated and threatened. Stalking, however, is more intense, sinister and distressing. Stalking is a pattern of fixated, obsessive behaviour which is repeated, persistent and intrusive. Those are the words of the two ladies and I think that's the way we have to think about it. When you think of what Eve McDowell and her, a girl from Grange and her flatmates below in Galway, when a guy puts a scaffolding plank, plank up against their, their balcony, climbs up and in the window and attacks one of her flatmates with a hammer after eating not one, but a box of Viagra. He had only one intention when he came in there and this is not normal behaviour. This isn't somebody having a silly crush on somebody and getting carried away. This is obsessive. And I think if we write to the minister, I don't think either the, the current minister or the minister who's on maternity leave at the moment, I don't think it's, I think they would support it, but maybe their officials just think that it's the same thing. But I think we should support these two women and the wonderful work they've done. Thank you.
Councillor Boyle, seconded.
Thank you, Chair, I'll be quick. Just to support the motion, we've seen over the years, whether it's through papers, news or TV, radio and social media, that these cases happen very often and very regularly. But unfortunately, there is no crime, you know. As Councillor Gilroy says, that man with him with one intention and one intention only and this generally leads to rape and murder, torture, you know. These are the things that needs to be cracked down on and I fully support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Castley.
Thank you, I'll be very brief, just to support the motion and to acknowledge also the bravery of, of those two ladies and to come out publicly and nationally and to tell their story and also it will help to, help others in that situation. So I'd just like to support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Maguire.
To support the motion, thank you.
Thank you. I think we're all in agreement on that.
In here, Kehirlock, so just, I'd like to support the motion as well. And having watched both of those on the programme, I want to compliment the Garda, the Garda on their intervention and how definitely they saved the life of the lady in Cork. I think their work has to be recognised and commended.
Thank you. Okay, members, motion number ten, Councillor McSharry, have I seconded? Seconded, Councillor Grady, thank you.
Thank you, Kehirlock, could I be brief? May want to welcome the report. I understand that the benches will be audited and any referral or stern of works that need to be done will be done in advance of the summer season. I was asked by the residents that raised this issue as a matter of urgency and I'm glad that the council will take action where necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Grady.
Just that I welcome the report that we are not yet done and I think it's something that should be done on an ongoing basis when we get back to normality. And just to move, I suppose, from the, the very centre of the motion, that litter, the bins would be emptied, especially for the weekends. I think on Friday night, they were fairly full now, early in the evening. So I would appeal that that will be done to leave the place looking pristine for people coming to us and appeal to people to bring their litter home as much as possible.
Thank you, Councillor Gibbons.
Just to the point of interest, do we not have painters anymore that we always had doing, carrying out that work on an ongoing basis? I know myself because my brother was over thirty odd years working with the council as a painter. And I know myself that he used to be sent out to the likes of Ross's Point, Strand and Linnis Run, all those different places. And the likes of that stuff was kind of carried on annual basis. I just wanted to know, have we still got painting staff or have we contracted that out, have we put it into the private sector?
Thank you, Miss Concanon.
No, Kehirlock, we don't have dedicated painting staff anymore, no. We try to do as much as we can through our own area office and if we can't, then we, we obviously contract works.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, members. Motion number eleven, Councillor Walsh, seconded by Councillor Fox.
Thank you, Kehirlock. I welcome the report and this is a very dangerous area. Everyone will be familiar with the crossroads which connect in the regional two, two eight seven, the two eight four and the old Dublin road. It's an extremely busy junction. We now have the National School, which is at capacity. There's an extension being completed currently. So there is no safe way to cross the road here from the National School at the Wellpad Hospital and back to the R two eight four or, or the, or the Coolbeg side from the church and the church car park. So I think this, I think we need to carry out an assessment of it. I have spoken to the engineer, I understand that will be done. It is a very difficult area to devise a plan for pedestrian crossing. We will need to acquire some land and hopefully we can find a solution to this. It's certainly something that the community have raised. I have met with them at the, at the junction and the community groups. And I, I would ask that this assessment be carried out as soon as is possible. Thank you, Kehirlock.
Thank you, Councillor Fox.
Yeah, just to support the motion.
Thank you, Councillor Castley.
Again, I'll be brief, just to support the motion and to commend the local authority for all the work that has been carried out over the years in Carrero and also to, to commend Cadra and all the volunteers there. They're an absolutely fantastic community and they've really made a huge difference in collaboration and conjunction with the support of, of Sligo County Council. So just to commend everybody on the work that has been done to date there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Healy.
Just through the chair, I want to support the motion as well and also a query just to ask, planning mission has been sought to do works at the school. I take it that the road department had, has come up with some solutions. If there's extra planning and the size of the school is, as it, as it is at current state, access in and out of the school and access out onto the, the old, the old Galway or old Dublin road. There's, which mean there's not a buildup of traffic there and parking facilities and that. I take it that was all gone through when the, applied for planning for the works to be done on the school.
You, thank you, Councillor Grady.
I support the motion. I visit the school quite often to collect my grandson who attends school there and certainly it would be very welcome, anything that would upgrade, upgrade the safety for parents and children attending the school. And I have to acknowledge that there has been huge work done by councillors of all parties and none in that area who allocated councillor funding over the years to ongoing upgrading of the, of the facilities outside the school and to acknowledge the work done by Cadra, the Community Development Group there, that worked tirelessly to keep their place so well.
Thank you. Okay, members, that's agreed. Moving on to motion twelve, Councillor Walsh, seconded, Councillor Healy.
Yeah, thank you, Kehirlock. I welcome the news that the, the works will begin in July in the report from this key piece of infrastructure connecting Killuni to Ballasadair. It's something that comes up time and time again over my two or two and a half years on Sligo County Council. This follows five hundred and twenty-two metres of work, footpath work that has been carried out at Carricknegat, more so the Ballasadair side.
Carricknegat, more so the Ballasadair side and our 31,600 we allocated from the Footpath Improvement Scheme last year for that footpath. So I think it's vital that we can, we progress this as soon as possible. I understand the works will take approximately 10 to 12 weeks from July. And I welcome the commitment by government for programmes like this active travel. Two hundred thousand has been allocated from government for this key piece of infrastructure. We have a lot of money, again, this year for a number of projects throughout the county as part of year one of a five-year active travel programme. I think, I think it's important that we develop infrastructure in collaborative to our greenways and to our towns and villages and our community halls, community parks and community centres. I won't say any more than that. I look forward to the works progressing and it's important the contract stays on course and that we begin the work in July. Thank you, Kehirlock.
Thank you councillor Healy.
Yeah, I'd just like to second the motion as well. And also thank the community in the area and the local farmer who started this first when we got the first bit done at Carricknegat, which was the most important part under the bridge. I want to thank Tom Brennan and his, and the road department for, when we did contact him, for putting this proposal forward for the extra funding to be done here. I think this is a massive, this will have a massive opportunity here for Killuni, Ballasadair, Tinas into Carrero and into Sligo, where people are able to walk between their villages, where they're able to cycle between their villages. And also that they'll be safe between their two villages. I think this is money well spent, well spent for the community that's in that area. And I know, speaking to a lot of the groups that worked and walked the road with me when we campaigned to get this work done, that they'd be over delighted when they've heard the news there last year in relation to the funding coming forward for it. So it's a good news story and I commend, commend everyone for all the hard work.
Thanks councillor Healy. Now, members, we're on motion number 13, just time check, it's twenty five to twelve, seconded by councillor Healy, or by councillor Walsh, councillor Healy, number thirteen.
Here we go again about the old mill and which is a eyesore and a hazard. Well, it's over twelve years now that this has been in front of us. I mean, on one occasion, through Sligo County Council, we were open, NAMO was coming on board and we had a project there to get it done. Unfortunately, the banks, what's the way the banks are, sold, sold it off to Fitzgerald, Fitzgerald Group. We are now in a position where we've seen that it's, young people can still get into the building. Two weeks ago, there a young fellow fell and broke his ankle and had to be taken out of it. There last week, I met with the Tidy Towns Committee and where we seen slates hanging off the roof in it. Now, enough is enough. How long more must the people in the Ballasadair area have to put up with this eyesore? Why aren't we pulling these developers in and saying enough is enough? Either give us an opportunity of what you're going to do with it or that. I receive response back, does mean it's the same response. Again, we'll contact these ones. We've been contacting them long enough. The people of Ballasadair are fed up of what's happening there with that building. It's an eyesore and it's a danger to the community itself. It's left wide open, they've secured it. And only for we pulled them in on the last time that the windows were kicked out and put out on the middle of the road, we have young people going in and out there. They can't secure it. We need something to be done with it. And the people of Ballasadair deserve to get something done with this place. So I'm calling Sligo County Council because over the next number of weeks, when Covid lifts, the people of Ballasadair will have their voice on what they want done with that. And I'll make sure of that because 12 years is long enough waiting for this. We've seen these eyesores in other areas. The council and the government needs to take a stand and we need to be bringing in, if these sites aren't used, then we need to be taxing them. We need to be making sure that they're paying in their pocket that, and not left, that they can buy these places and leave them there for the community to suffer from. So I'm asking the council again to write once more for them because we haven't received enough from them. And that we want to commit with them once and for all, what are they going to do with this building? And give the people of Ballasadair a bit of peace of mind. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Walsh.
I want to support what councillor Healy has said. It's an appalling eyesight on the way into Ballasadair from the Sligo side. It's gone on too long. Enough is enough. You know, there isn't too many months where you're not contacted about this or something going on around it or something going on in it. We've been, we've been, we've given the owners of this property enough time. They've done a small bit of a painting job and a bit of sheeting on the front, on the front of it. As councillor Healy has said, this can't continue the way it is. Unfortunately, this is one of a few derelict sites resulting from the boom of many, many years ago. We have a lot of community groups that work very, very hard in Ballasadair to improve walkways, to improve footpaths, to improve the common areas. And we have a private owner who has done little or nothing with this for many, many years. So I think it's time that the council take a hard line on this with the owners. It cannot continue going on into the future. People go around doing volunteer work to improve Ballasadair, to make it safer, to improve the public facilities. And we have this eyesore on the way into Ballasadair, where over 2,000 people are resident. It's not good enough. It's a satellite town in the Ireland 2040 report. And we need to deal with this sooner, sooner than later. Thank you, Kehirlock.
Thank you councillor Gilroy.
Apologies for clicking my fingers at you. It shouldn't come out that loud. So apologies. Just to support the motion and look, there's a motion for the later meeting for the municipal district about a similar property in Grange. And we might bring up this topic again and discuss it there. And just because time is precious here, if the members are agreeable. But I support the motion.
Okay, thank you. It's eleven forty councillor Boyle, motion number fourteen, can I have a second or second councillor Gray?
After receiving the report, that's fine. I understand that there's no works, there's nothing left. But I would ask that it be put on the agenda for the next round of works. The medieval centre is one of the most busiest places in the town. The roads up to it aren't great. And also if the rams could be left there because some of them are like little mountains. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gray. Just a second. Thank you. Okay, members agreed. Motion number fifteen councillor Boyle again. Second councillor Gray.
This motion for solidarity tax comes on the back of Oxfam reports about the amount of money taken in over the past year and a half. And I will be calling and asking to discounting calls for a COVID solidarity tax. And the proceeds, the proceeds of this tax should be used to support those who have heard this by the pandemic and support the frontline workers and services. Only a few minutes ago, we heard about the costs going to be skyrocketing for food and clothing and houses. The inequality virus report shows that the fortune of Irish billionaires have increased by nearly four billion since the start of the pandemic. The wealth being accrued by the Irish rich is demonstrated. This report shows that we have a two-tier pandemic. On one hand, we have people who have lost their income or large proportions of it. Many cases, people have lost their jobs and livelihoods. Frontline health care has now risked their lives to keep us safe and student nurses who are not getting paid for the legitimate work they are doing. And on the other hand, we can see a massive wealth accumulation by Irish billionaires. The government needs to implement a COVID solidarity tax in order to gather funds to assist those whose incomes have been devastated by the pandemic and to invest in our frontline health and other services and properly reward the frontline service or staff and essential workers who are protected and sustained us during this crisis. The COVID crisis, as well as hammering our public health systems, our economy and tragically claiming the lives of thousands of people in this country, has exposed the vast inequality in this country, truly bust to bait the government line of we are all in this together. I think it's time we take the sort of action that it would take rather than empty slogan or a standing ovation. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gray.
The, two weeks ago, actually RTE in its report on the annual Forbes billionaires list said that there was a reasonable expectation in light of the pandemic that the world's wealthiest would have seen their cash piles somewhat diminished in the past 12 months. Not so. In fact, the richest people in the world added more than $5 trillion to their collective wealth, according to RTE. In addition, almost 500 more people achieved billionaire status in the last year, bringing to a record 2,755, the number of people on the planet whose net worth exceeds $1 billion. Last week, the Irish Times told us that Amazon paid no corporation tax on its operations in Ireland. And the EU in 2020, despite enjoying record sales income of 43.8 billion euro, 43.8 billion euro, paying no corporation tax to this government or to this country or to the European Union. And a new report, which councillor Boyle has referred to from Oxfam, claims that the fortunes of Ireland's billionaires has risen 3.3 billion euro since the start of the COVID pandemic. And at the same time, we have Joe O'Brien, who's Minister of State with responsibility for social inclusion, saying that there is a very good chance that the rate of consistent poverty in Ireland went up last year due to the impact of COVID-19, making it more difficult to hit the country's target of lowering the rate to 2% from its 2019 level of 5.5%. Oxfam points out that we're facing into the worst increase in inequality since the financial crisis of 2008. We stand to witness the greatest rise in inequality since records began, with the deep divide between the rich and poor proving as deadly as the virus itself, Oxfam has pointed out. So in this context, Kehirlock, I believe it's only fair that the super wealthy and companies making super profits during the pandemic should be levied to assist those who are suffering its impact. I'm only second the motion.
Okay, members, motion agreed. Moving on to motion number 16 councillor Gilroy second, councillor Walsh.
Yeah, thank you, Kehirlock. I'd be as brief as I can. This is a very, very serious issue. I've raised this a number of times. I've raised it when we met with the chief administrator, administrative officer in Gardaí Sheacanna, when we met with him here in the chamber, and have failed to get a reply from him at that, at that point or in further correspondence. Many, many people will be aware that the Armed Support Unit is involved in drug warrants, arrest warrants, feud-related intimidation and offences, violent mental health incidents which occur regularly in the Sligo area. As a background, the Armed Support Unit is permanently based in Ballyshannon, which covers Sligo and Leitrim. The unit was split at the beginning of the pandemic, March 20th, with half the unit based in Sligo and half in Ballyshannon and covered Donegal. It worked very, very well at that point. But since the unit has been restored to Ballyshannon in County Donegal, it's vital that the option of armed assistance to unarmed Gardaí working in Sligo Leitrim is available, but available rapidly. For example, if a call were to come into Sligo Guards Station relative to a potential firearms incident, violent, violent incidents, firearms incident or robbery, the armed unit has to be dispatched from Donegal. This is simply unacceptable and is putting unarmed Gardaí at great risk. I've spoken to dozens of Gardaí in relation to this. And this situation is untenable. There are currently 12 officers in the Armed Support Unit training course from the northern region, from this Gardaí region. The course is due to be completed in August with these additional officers. And I believe it should allow for Sligo to be considered as a permanent base for an armed support unit. After this course, there could potentially be 18 to 20 armed support unit members. So the option of a unit in Sligo should be possible and considered. I contacted all deputies yesterday evening in relation to this matter. All Gardaí, I have spoken to no member of Engarda Sheacanna that's not in support of a permanent base in County Sligo to cover Sligo Leitrim. I think of the 12 Gardaí training, seven of the Gardaí have worked or lived in the Sligo area and would have an interest in working out of Sligo, not only to provide security to members of Engarda Sheacanna, but also to the public. I want to go through an example very, very quickly. Two weeks ago in Sligo Town, it showed how important the Armed Support Unit is. There was an outbreak of gang-fueled violence, which resulted in two serious assaults, an arson attack on a vehicle and a house, windows smashed in two houses, as well as a number of public order incidents. The 30-minute wait in an armed support unit from Ballyshannon showed during these incidents. Plus, it was so busy that the armed, an armed support unit had to be dispatched from Galway to assist. Now, I'm not a policing expert, but we're putting members of the public and members of Engarda Sheacanna at risk. It's simply unacceptable going forward that we don't have access and fast access to an armed support unit in Sligo Leitrim. It cannot continue. The members are in training and it's now time for four deputies and the minister and the Gardaí Regional Chief based in Galway to act on this. And I would call on all the members to support this motion. And we might relay, relay it also to the four dual deputies in Sligo Leitrim. Thank you, Kehirlock.
Thank you councillor Gilroy, sorry.
Again, I'd like to support the motion. And look, it's out there. Everybody knows there's a powder keg in Sligo and the guards are working really, really well to try and keep on top of it. But it's a dangerous situation and I worry that the lack of the Armed Support Unit being based here in Sligo may mean that lives are lost before they get here in an emergency. So I fully support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. One sec councillor Boyle, London. Oh, who just supported councillor Gibbons?
No, the one thing I want to say in relation to it, it's all right calling for having an armed support unit within Sligo or based in Sligo. And technically, I would have to support it. But the reason, my own understanding is in relation to the special branch, the detectives we have in Sligo are already an armed unit. Like, that's the reality to it. And like, I know that we have a criminal element within Sligo and it needs to be stamped out. And I think we wouldn't take an awful lot. All that it takes is the laws themselves to be updated instead of pre-liberate Victorian laws that we have. The law itself needs to be shaken up in relation to dealing with these criminals. Because a lot of these criminals, and you'll find it itself, regardless whether you have an armed support unit or not, will keep operating. It's not to endanger somebody's life to pull a weapon. That's the only time and the armed response unit is there that they can use it. I think myself, now don't take me wrong, I support, I support the motion. I do support the motion. And I do think that the Gardaí need every chance to protect themselves. But I really think, and especially with the government councillors that are from the government parties that's here, they should be talking about it in their own parties, is to try and get the laws updated. We're the only country, I think, in Europe, in modern Europe, that's overran by criminal activity. In England, they haven't got this problem. Germany or France, they haven't got it. They're on top of it, outlawed it. In this country, it seems to be nearly the criminals that's running the show. And that's not down to the Gardaí. That's down to inadequate laws that's there. They're not being backed, they're not being backed by a judicial system. But I would, as I says, I would support the motion. But I really think and I'd ask the government party members here is to go back to your, back to the government and see about getting the laws amended.
Thank you councillor Casserly. Can you be brief? Thanks. It's just ten to twelve.
Yeah, thank you. Just to support the motion and to acknowledge all the work, including drug seizures and everything that has happened in Sligo over the past few years, but particularly in the past few months, in difficult COVID circumstances. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion seventeen councillor Gray, can I have a second of councillor Boyle? Sorry.
Kehirlock, I wish to thank the head of finance for that document. There's a mention, an indication that there are other categories in the budget that there's contributions to other bodies. But I won't delay the meeting now. I might come back to the, to the meeting administrator on that, just for clarification. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Boyle, you happy enough? Thank you. Councillor Gray, motion eighteen, second councillor Boyle.
Kehirlock, as we're all aware, any citizen has the right to make a submission or observation or objection to a planning application within five weeks of the council receiving the planning application. However, it's been brought to my attention by members of the public that when planning applications are received by Sligo County Council, it can take up to three weeks before the planning application documentation is validated and placed online on the council's website. This means that a person in Sligo has a period of only two weeks to consider the application and to make a submission or observation on the planning application. And to my knowledge, this doesn't occur in any other county in the country. So in essence, this undermines the Planning Act and the Planning and Development Regulations and curtails the rights of citizens in Sligo to participate in the planning process. And I've noted the report on the matter which we have received from the director of services, Ms Clarke. And I have to say, I don't find it in any way reassuring. Obviously, there are challenges in maintaining a service while complying with COVID-related health and safety measures. But the same challenges apply to every other county in the country. And we're told that a total of 138 planning applications were received up to the first of May 2020 compared to 158 for the same period last year. Now, I'm unclear as to what the reduction in planning applications last year has got to do with the problems in the planning process this year. I have significant concerns about this, Kehirlock. Indeed, it must be asked if there could be a court challenge to a planning decision by Sligo County Council if a citizen made the case that he or she didn't have adequate time in which to consider a planning application and to make a submission to the planning authority. So I will be asking that we be updated on this issue in the coming weeks. And I expect that there will be improvements or hopeful that there will be improvements. Thanks, Kehirlock.
Thank you councillor Boyle. You happy enough with that? Thank you. Sorry, councillor Casserly, you've handed up. No, okay. Thank you. Motion number nineteen councillor Healy, can I have a second there? Councillor Gilroy?
Yeah, look, I know we're against the clock here. But just in relation to this, my original motion two years ago called for a toilet to be provided here and also the AIDS Interpretation Centre may be considered here. And the response I got back, there's nothing here about the toilets. We're, we know the tourist attraction in Drumcliff and nearly 100,000, or 10,000 people visit this, the grave of WB8. And there's only one facility available down there at the moment. And that's the coffee shop to supply a toilet. Now, we're here, we're talks here today of Ross's Point have a toilets open, and that's welcome, Inniscroan toilets open, that is welcome, we see Strand Hill portal has been put in, that's welcome, but nothing has been done here in Inniscroan, down in Clifney, or Drumcliff. And I'm requesting now the Sligo County Council look serious at putting it in, because we're hearing them from their report back, which mean the environment grounds that can't be done. If you take a trip up as far as Boyle Abbey, Boyle Abbey has facilities, toilets in there, where they have mobile tanks that take away the waste. They have a facility up there where you can win now, and there's wheelchair access for women and men, and even facilities there for children changing children, all one unit that lands in. I know it's going to cost money, there's no one saying it won't, but I have yet to see anyone that's not willing to pay, put a few pounds in to have this facility down there. So I'm asking Sligo County Council, let's not waste this opportunity. It's on the Wild Atlantic Way, where buses and cars and everything is coming to it. 10,000 people come into an area which will bring business, help businesses and everything else, and all we're asking is that we provide toilets in it. Now, let's make some ground on this, because it's two years in the making, it's been raised here by all councillors in the Umissville area. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gilroy.
Just because of the clock, I'm going to just let it run. I fully support the motion, and I think this thing has to be dealt with sooner rather than later.
Thank you. Members, motion number 20, councillor Bree, can I have a second there? Councillor O'Boyle?
I wish to thank the director of services, Ms Concanon, for this report. I sought the report because I was contacted by the director of the Neurology Support Centre in Sligo. The Neurology Support Centre currently has a beach wheelchair on loan from this council, and I understand that they are planning to purchase an additional one. However, they're anxious to receive an assurance that they will have easy access to the beach. The director of the centre advised me that the beach at Ross's Point cannot be accessed by the wheelchair, and she indicated that the current ramp would need to be extended. Now, I note the positive report we have received from the director of services, particularly relating to Ross's Point, Moloch Moor and Inniscroan, and I also note that there is a sloped path provided at Dunmore Beach. And I accept, Cahill, look, that there are constant problems at Strand Hill due to the build-up of stones. Indeed, I and others have had to clear small amounts of stones off the ramp in Ross's Point on occasions following high tides. Hopefully, at some stage in the not-too-distant future, we will have the resource to provide wheelchair access to Strida Beach. Could I ask that the Infrastructure Services Department make contact with the Neurology Support Centre so as to identify any problems that may exist in Ross's Point? Farmery move. Thank you, Cahill.
Thank you, councillor O'Boyle, you're happy enough with that? We proceed ahead. Okay, members, we're nearly at five to... Motion 21, councillor Gibbons, can I have a second there? Councillor Healy, thank you.
Following the release of the EU Commissioner's new regional aid guidelines, I am calling on the Minister for Enterprise Trade and Employment to include County Sligo as part of the border, northern and western region in the state's regional aid map, as areas qualify for ongoing assistance. The recent release of the EU Commissioner's new regional aid guidelines, which apply from 2022, showed a decision to reduce from 51.28% to 35.9% the eligible population of the 26 counties that can benefit from regional aid. It really is regrettable that the EU Commissioner's decision to reduce the eligible population that can benefit from regional aid, given the economic impact of impact and the continuing need for investment in the border and northern and western region. That is why it is imperative that the Minister leave Raka takes time off from his usual attention-seeking, and notify the EU Commissioner of Ireland's new regional map according to the new guidelines. I am in full agreement with my colleague, Chris McManus, MEP, who on behalf of Sinn Féin made a submission to the EU, arguing that Ireland and especially the north and western border region should continue benefit for a number of reasons. The regional aid guidelines should take into account the anticipated impact of Brexit on the region and reduce threshold and extra scope for regional aid, and should be available in the worst effective regions. The case of regions not improving relatively, or in fact moving to a less developed classification like the northwest, like the north and the western region, requires special attention in the regional aid guidelines. Removing or reducing their eligibility for regional aid will be highly counterproductive and should not happen. A new overall approach, which champion state aid in the region, should be implemented to make sure that the Covid crisis does not develop into another permanent factor in regional disparities. And could I also pay recognition to the two councillors from this council that's actually on the north and western regional board, and that's councillor Bree and councillor Gilroy, and I know that the work to do on it is second to none, and I do know that they'll keep the likes of this to the front of the agenda. Thank you very much, Mr Mayor, unless you want to support this.
Thank you, councillor Healy, just in support of the motion, thank you. Moving on, so members, motion number 22, councillor Gilroy, can I have a second there?
I'm going to defer that because of the time scale. Can I just ask my previous motion to be circulated to other councils, the one about the stalking, if it could be, thank you.
Lovely, thank you. We're nearly there now. Councillor Gibbons, motion 23, could I link the part of councillor Grady's motion, because they both have an issue they were dogfowling? Is that okay? Yeah. Well, so I'll take the two second, this one goes, right, okay. Okay, is that, you got the report?
I'm happy with the report, Cahill, look, we got the report, and the problem that really, it kind of frightens me in relation to this and creates great concern, is the fact that under GDPR, we cannot use these cameras to make a prosecution on anybody whose dogs is fouling in the area. And there's a number of questions that I have to ask in relation to that, that's one that I have. Does that actually mean, because of the information that I got, that if somebody was assaulted at somebody's property, was damaged or something else, does that mean that the information that's on them cameras cannot be used in the same way? Because I cannot understand it. Somebody has a dog on the lead, it's caught on camera, and the dog is fouling, the dog cleaned up. I cannot understand why it can't be done. But that was the information that I got under GDPR, that it couldn't be. The other aspect that I'd like to come in relation to it is the whole thing of the two part-time workers. I don't see what effect they would have, because we're hiring these for the summer for our beaches. This is not going in where we have the major problems. There was a number of people in Crammoor and different estates around the town that came to me in relation to people actually not even living in the area, coming in, walking their dogs through it, up across the green, letting the dogs soil, and they carry on and walk away like nothing's happened. The children in the area is taking an awful lot more off that green than just grass on their shoes. And I think myself that it's something we need to deal with. I think we, unless that we're able to make prosecutions in relation to this, nothing's going to happen, because we're all aware that dog fouling is illegal, it's the responsibility of the person. This whole thing about educating people, they've done this for years, every one of us knows the diseases that can be got of dog foul and everything else, especially with young children. And I feel myself it's been brushed off, brushed off, brushed off. I even seen something coming up in relation to another area of the country where they were talking about using DNA, but they had to ask the permission of the owner of the dog, to get a sample of the dog first before they go do it. I tell you, I never laughed as much when I bloody well heard the thing, but it seems to be excuses, excuses, excuses. But I really feel that the only way we're going to do this is to use the cameras to secure prosecutions. Cameras are going 24/7. Our staff finish at five and six o'clock in the day, that is the reality to it. And I think myself, unless that we're able to get, make prosecutions out of this, it's the only effective way, and there need to be hefty fines. But in relation to the question that I asked about the cameras, can they be used in relation to people's property being damaged or people being assaulted, or do they come under the same thing as the dog fouling GDPR? And if it is, I think myself that it's a waste of time to have the cameras. Thanks very much.
Thank you, councillor Grady. Support the motion. Thank you. Motion 24, councillor Grady, second there?
26 now, they were taken joint care.
Oh, yeah, sorry, sorry, yeah. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, on the camera. Do we have a reply?
Cahill, look, maybe I'll just say that I know that the legislation in relation to dog fouling and litter, that's under waste management, so it's under the waste management legislation, which my understanding is that that is the issue with the GDPR, but that has been looked at now at a national level by the department. So I can't comment on the other, but certainly waste management is part of it.
Okay, thanks, councillor Grady, 26, yeah.
Yes, I have the motion down, because the amount of people that has come to me as I'm out walking or whatever I'm doing about the issue of dog fouling since the pandemic is huge. And an area I walk most days, one area, I'll pick it, children going down to Scullerslaugh, where they can't avoid a narrow footpath that is there, there's a barricade beside it for their safety, that they can't avoid it, that the amount of dog fouling that's in that area. So look, we all know it's a problem since, and it has become more evident since the pandemic, we're all out walking more, and everybody seems to be walking their dogs more. So it's just about civic responsibility that those of us that have a dog, that if they foul, that we take it, because as councillor Gibbons has outlined, the seriousness of illness, the children, anybody, but we have to protect the children especially that can get from it, is very serious. So it's important that we keep it on the table and that it's seen to. The illegal dumping, I can think of along the railway line, and it's absolutely dreadful. And I have asked that a letter will be written to CIE to clean up the embankment up to Matherboy and down to the railway station, because that whole area, people are passing by and throwing the rubbish in. But thank you.
Thank you. And just my own thing on that, and I know that both speakers will agree, I also was contacted by a person in a wheelchair. So dog fouling on a footpath, if a person is in a wheelchair, it's a disgrace that it goes over their hands, you know, so people have to be more, certainly be more mindful. Yeah. Every, I think we'll all support that. Motion 24, councillor Grady, Bring Banks, second it. Can I get a second there? Councillor Gibbons. Did you get a report on that?
Yeah, I wasn't able to open the report you sent me.
Maybe could that report be sent, or do you want? If you could send the report again, please aim it to councillor Grady, thank you.
I want to get the report. But now, I want to say a few words on it.
Ms Concanon, have you the report in front of you? You're on mute.
Yeah, will I read the report?
Yes, please.
Okay.
If it's short.
Okay, so approximately 19 years ago in 2002, Sligo County Council introduced bottle banks for plastic bottles at 18 locations in Sligo Town and County. The servicing of these bottle banks was very costly, and there were ongoing problems with their maintenance. The service was provided at the time, at the time as there was no other mechanism for households to recycle plastic bottles. The introduction of domestic herb side recycling in 2004 negated the necessity for Sligo County Council to provide bottle banks for plastic bottles, and the service was withdrawn. Sligo County Council currently has 44 bring banks throughout the town and county, which are managed and maintained by the bottle bank caretaker. These bring banks accept glass bottles, glass jars, drink cans, and some also have a facility to accept textiles. Glass is the predominant material that is collected at the bottle banks, and this facility is necessary as glass is not accepted in the domestic recycling service. Recyclable plastic goods are accepted for a small cost at the two civic community centres located in Sligo Town and in Tuba Currie. These bring sites, along with the availability of curb side collection of household recycled plastic goods in almost all areas of Sligo, is currently considered adequate to deal with the recycling of plastic goods. We're not aware of any other local authority providing the collection of plastic goods at bring banks at this time.
Okay, well, I put this motion down on the head of a few people coming to me as regards it, and people who might not be able to get to the bank on the Deepwater Quay. So I take your report, and it's disappointing, but that's the reality of.
Next motion, 25.
Thank you.
I brought this up at the municipal district again, and Ms Concanon knows my views on it, but also people out in the county have come to me about it. It's not good enough, and I take it that the standard of grass cutting will be reviewed. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, members, we're nearly there. Motion 27, councillor Baker. Put on your microphone, you're on mute.
Yeah, can I hear you?
Yeah, can I have a second there?
Yeah.
Thank you, councillor Healy.
It's just a question that we write to the minister. The initial process isn't too bad, but if it's been appealed, then the leave would go on for six months. And I don't think it's acceptable in these times, but you're saving money by a person caring for a person in their own home. In a lot of cases, if they don't get that extra care, it means that they have to go to a nursing home at huge expense, and I just look for support, and thank you.
Thank you. And that's second by councillor Healy.
Yeah, I just want to support the motion and the importance of carers and the works that they do.
Okay, thank you. That's agreed. Motion 28, councillor Mulaney, I'll second that. Councillor Mulaney?
Yeah, councillor Cahill, look, yeah, I note the report from Ms Clark. I was a part of this motion out of concern for a number of community centres, including Highwood, that has adequate broadband, but the conditions of the building isn't good enough for people to work in it. The heating isn't good enough, the insulation isn't good enough, it needs to be fitted out with this and other electronic equipment. And I note that the Covid Stability Fund and the community enhancement programmes are possibilities for funding, but I think there is probably additionally it needed to bring them up to a standard where they're inviting enough for people to work.
Thanks, councillor Mulaney, and I second that. Motion, item 29, votes of sympathy, I have some here on the table in front of me. Votes of congratulations.
Seconded.
Seconded. Proposed councillor Mulaney, seconded by councillor Gilroy. Votes of congratulations, proposed councillor Gilroy, seconded.
Can I just speak, can I speak for a moment on those? Just, like, it's great that we have votes of congratulations to our two Olympians that have been successful from Grange in getting through, even though Sligo-Drumcliff area is the one area that doesn't have a swimming pool, and the other two areas has one, yet we can still get an Olympic swimmer. We don't have a synthetic track, we don't have a synthetic track, and we've got an athlete through in the relay, and we don't have a surfing centre of excellence either, but hopefully in two weeks' time, Garret McDaid will join the two from Grange. I know he lives in Hazelwood, but we wish him the best of luck as well, that he qualifies in El Salvador for the Olympics. It'll be great if we have three going. Thank you.
Thank you. Conferences and training, agreed. Agreed. Item 32, to not summary of the proceedings of conferences allocated in accordance with section 142 of the Local Government Act, agreed. Disagreed. Okay, correspondence, we have a list of them there. Item number 34, matters from minutes, grade, no matters from the minutes. And item number 35, any other business, councillor Grady?
I just wish to congratulate Sligo Rovers chair, Tommy Higgins, and the committee on the launching of an excellent master plan for the ongoing development of the shoregrounds, the home of Sligo Rovers. And this spend will ensure that the shoregrounds is one of the finest venues in the League of Ireland. I'm asking my fellow councillors to commit support for their excellent, for this excellent venture, and that we won't be found wanting in assisting this very exciting master plan go into fruition. I have no doubt that the executive will be very happy to give that ongoing support as well. So hopefully, we will see it come to fruition, and it will leave Sligo, as I said, one of the best venues in the League of Ireland, and that's not even considering the fabulous view that there is on the shoregrounds. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Catherley.
I'd just like to concur with councillor Grady in what she said there, congratulate everybody involved with Sligo Rovers. It really is putting Sligo and the northwest on the map, and we can certainly, we can put it up to all the other regions who have a lot more money than we do, and we can match the best of them. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Healy.
Yeah, I think it's a great move by Sligo Rovers and what they're doing, and especially with their young academy there and bringing players through. We have one of the players here sitting in front of me, Gino O'Boyle, who played with Sligo Rovers, and this means it's important, this means that Sligo is soccer town, and this is, I think this is a great opportunity, and it's important that us as councillors get behind and support it.
Thank you, councillor Gibbons.
I want to be associated with all... I want to be associated with all the remarks in relation to the whole development there in the shore grounds. And as councillor O'Grady had known, not, he wouldn't know, but that used to be our back garden, isn't it, Rosley? It didn't belong to anybody else in Trissie Avenue, but it was our back garden. We backed out onto the shore grounds and remember the good old days in the shore grounds before there was any sheds there. And we were able to watch the football matches out the back window of our house on the worst of days and that was it. But it's great to see that this whole development being proposed. And I think myself it's a dream at the moment and it's a dream that we want to see come through. I think Sligo deserves it, the people of Sligo deserves it. And you know what? The history of Sligo Rovers deserves it and that's the reality to it. Thanks very much.
Thank you, councillor Boyle. Yeah, just to support and look, I think we all fully supportive and congratulate them on the great, on everyone. I think we're all agreed on that. Okay, members, thanks very much for your cooperation today. The next meeting is on Monday, the 14th of June, so just to give you the date on that because the first Monday, I think, is the bank holiday. So thanks, everybody, for getting through, clearing the agenda for today. Thank you.